Here it is.
Here it is.
Good job.
Call the meeting to order at 6:00 P. M. If you could please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I have a rule call for attendance. Raymond Kerr.
Here.
Kevin Bertaki.
Here.
Lou Manhoma.
Here.
Brian Nolan.
Present.
Carrie Fox.
Here.
Brian Snyder is absent with cause. He may be able to make it a little bit later. He wasn't 100% sure. Scott Tadowski is here and Mayor Bob Lang.
Here.
Borough Solicitor Eric D.
Here.
Borough Manager Dwight Bodoff is absent with cause. Code Enforcement Officer Anthony Bruni.
Here.
And Detective Glagowski.
Yes.
Here.
Say it right?
Yes, correct.
Good job.
You're getting me brownie points when you do it right.
Gold star. All right, that brings us to the first citizens' comment section of the agenda. Anybody that is new, watching or in person, we offer two citizens' comment sections. The first one is reserved for anything that is on the agenda. If you needed agenda, there's a bunch of them listed on the table.
We have to do this one.
Why do I not have that?
I don't know, we do. Wait a minute.
I apologize.
You want mine?
You want Brian's?
Well, take Brian's. Here.
That's interesting.
Coffee.
All right, get rid of that one. Sorry about that.
We will start over.
All right, scratch the citizens' comment section. Before we do that, can I have a motion to amend the agenda to add approval of county expressions banned to utilize the amphitheater on Sunday, June 25, 2023 for a free concert social event open to the public? Note on this, there's no street closure, but they will need electric service. And they have already put the deposit and paid for this service. We're making the agenda or an amendment since this is happening before our next meeting and came in after the meeting last week. So can I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Brian on the motion, Ray on the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are one, two, three, we are six passes unanimously, six, zero. Now that brings us to the first citizens' comment section of the evening. This first citizens' comment section is open to anything that is listed on the agenda this evening. We do offer a second one, which is the very last thing we do before we adjourn for the evening. There are agendas around the corner on the table. But if you have a comment about anything that is listed on the agenda, please stand up, state your name for the record and your address, and you may make your comment. So I will start right to left.
Yeah, the corner.
Attendances right.
That side over there. Thank you.
I will start to my right, your left, and we'll just go straight. Any comment, anything on the agenda?
On what, on what? I, I didn't hear.
Any comment on anything that's listed on the agenda?
I haven't looked at it, I'm sorry. But no, I look at it.
Going straight across, any comments for anything that is listed on the agenda this evening?
Yes, I'd like to comment.
Stand in.
Cynthia Kramer, 541 East 9th Avenue, Trenton. I'd like to comment regarding the gazebo at 215 Corbett Street. And basically, I am questioning the, that as a concept at all. Questioning whether there's a zoning issue, a setback issue, there's all kinds of other issues. I thought it was going to be a parklet where people could randomly sit and enjoy the downtown. The gazebo seems to me a very strange choice, given we already have one in the park. We have an amphitheater in the park. And it's described, at least in the newspaper, as something that's raised so people can see, but I can't see how anyone can see it from anywhere unless you're closing streets and having a free-for-all. I don't see on a regular basis how a raised gazebo in that location is visible to anyone unless they're on the Blackburn side of Corbett Street. And otherwise, there's really no access. It seems to me a very odd use of that property when a couple of park benches and maybe a checker's table or something would be more of a community building item. So that's my concern about that choice.
Thank you, I appreciate your comment. Anybody else in the back row for anything that is listed on the agenda? All right. Moving to exceptions to open meeting laws, we did not have any open meetings or any exceptions, any executive sessions since our last meeting last Tuesday. The minutes to the regular meeting, the regular council meeting have been disseminated and are available online. Can I have a motion to approve the regular council meeting council agenda minutes?
Second.
Second.
Carrie on the first, Brian on the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously, six, zero. We did have one communication come in since last week. Let me get to here. It is a letter from the Community Library of Allegheny Valley, May 8, 2023. Dear Trenton Board of Directors, on behalf of the Library Board of Directors, we would like to extend our deepest gratitude for passing a resolution celebrating our library's 100th anniversary. It is, it is honored to be recognized by our local government. We are incredibly grateful for your support. As a community resource, our library has been serving Trenton and its surrounding areas for a century now. We have provided a wealth of knowledge, resources, and educational programs to countless individuals over the years. Our goal has always been to promote literacy, learning, and personal development. With the support of the community and local government, we have been able to do just that. Your recognition of our 100th anniversary is a testament to the value our library holds within the community. It is a reminder that the work we do is appreciated and that we have made a positive impact on the lives of those we serve. Your support encourages us to continue providing access to information and resources that empower individuals to learn and grow. Once again, we thank you for your time, support, and recognition of our library's 100th anniversary. We look forward to continuing our work in serving our community. Sincerely, the Library Board of Directors. Which takes us to our committee and departments reports. Mr. Mayor.
Nothing interesting.
As far as the present report goes, I only have a couple of short little things, I promise. I did attend a couple of meetings since our last meeting in, in May. The Allegheny League and Municipality Board of Directors Meeting, we attended on June 1st. It was, we reviewed the budget for this upcoming year. There was a lot of discussion around the educational conference that Karen and I both attended, just general feedback and session information. It was received very well. And they're continuing to talk, they've been speaking for quite a while about that alternate communication piece. We're lucky that we have the valley that we're able to advertise, but they're still trying to push that legislation through to have some type of online portal that anything that needs to be advertised, bids, whatever it is, can be online through just a general portal for the entire state. So they're still working to kind of push that through. Dwight and I attended the CDC meeting. They're now meeting on a bi-monthly basis, so the next one will be in July. But we attended that back on May 17th. Still is virtual, we have never met in person, so hopefully one of these times we will. A lot of discussion on the NPP grant and, and working on transportation. Trying to come up with some unique solutions to get people from here up to the heights and to the hospital and vice versa. So that is still one of their number one concerns. Again, the next meeting will be probably the third week of, second or third week of July. Then my last three things is just really a shout out to kind of all of the public entities of the boroughs, the police department and our first responders. You guys have had a busy, I don't know, seven, six, seven days with some, just an uptick of some unfortunate incidents, so shout out to you guys and, and your professionalism and everything that you do on a daily basis. Our public work crew again, finally got some rain, which means the grass will grow, but the park looks fantastic. And then I know some people were affected by the water break. When was that last? Trying to think what it was. But it was, talking to our water guy, it was the largest break that he's ever repaired. Not only the longest section, but I think the longest actual break in the line. So it was something that was.
It's like a 10 or 12 inch line?
Yeah, it was a big break. So shout out to all those guys for all of the hard work that they do. And that's all I have. Eric, Solicitor Report.
Yes, between the last meeting and this meeting, I've been working on the zoning ordinance with our consultant and Mr. Bruni. We met for a phone conference in the middle of May. I spoke with her again last week. We're in the process of getting a draft together. And that's my priority right now. We hope to have some of this ordinance completed by the end of the summer to be able to be voted on by everyone. That's all I have.
Well, if we can do that by the end of summer, that would be excellent. We're doing the check off. Bark, I don't know if you have anything else to add as far as police department goes. The code officer, Mr. Bruni.
Yes, you'll be voting tonight on this lock consolidation. And following the meeting, Scott, you'll have to sign four copies three times.
Yes.
Four copies three times.
Yes, four copies three times.
I can do that. I can do that.
And then you'll also be voting on some, some demolition activity.
Good.
And I can give details if anybody asks questions.
Awesome, thank you. The engineer report, the link is posted there. That report is posted online. The manager report, he's got a couple other, a couple updates here. Again, he's absent with cause. Just some other updates. I know the town is buzzing with waste management and some people have got carts, some people haven't got carts. This is the week that they are starting to deliver carts. I don't know what the rhyme or reason is, how they are delivering them, but they are delivering about 500 per day. And that's, they're the ones that are delivering them. So Waste Management is putting them about 500 Monday through Friday. So by the end of the week, there'll be about 2,500 garbage cans that have been delivered. By Friday, if you do not have a garbage can, call the borough. And we can figure out why you don't get it, why you don't have a garbage can. But they are taking Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday to give everybody the can. Everybody is getting that giant 96 gallon can. Waste Management is asking that everybody try that can for 30 days. If you call and say, hey, I need a smaller can, unfortunately, right now there's nothing we can do about it. We don't have any smaller cans to give anybody. So Waste Management is asking, if you need a 30, that everybody tries this for 30 days. Next week is supposed to be the first time that they use those new cans. Our understanding is if it is not in the can, it's not getting picked up.
Are they starting next week?
I believe they're starting next week.
I thought it was beginning in July. They did already out where I live.
So, yeah, so I could be wrong, but they're, they are, they're asking, I know they're asking at least everybody to try this for 30 days.
Scott, any timeline on when you'll be able to purchase a second one if you need it?
I think that's a 30 day kind of thing, too.
You might want to mention about what Carrie said about writing checks for.
Oh, yeah.
Making people aware that they don't do that.
Don't pay, don't pay delivery people.
Definitely.
Call.
Yeah, if they, if you call Waste Management right now, they're going to tell you to do this for 30 days. Because I, again, I know some residents have already contacted me that they don't need a 96 gallon can. Unfortunately, we're kind of at the mercy of Waste Management. And everyone's going to try this out for at least a month. But we have been promised smaller cans, so hopefully when we get to that 30 day mark, that people will be able to exchange it if they need something smaller or buy an additional can.
Also, you should know that all the cans are coded to addresses. So if you have one at your house and someone borrows it, they'll scan and find it.
You can call Waste Management and they'll find it for you and bring it back to you.
Cool.
Beauty of technology.
Yeah.
Don't, don't ask the garbage, the people that are delivering the garbage cans for another can. Because I had a resident call me today and tell me that he paid them for a can. So then it was a big cleanup, so.
Big to do.
Yes, don't pay them for a can.
Because it's actually a sec, it's actually a third party delivering them. It's not even Waste Man, Waste Management's not actually delivering the carts. They have another.
A third party.
That aren't really them, so, yeah.
The Water System, the DEP, the audit results, the link is posted there. Those results are available online if anybody's interested to read them. But it's pretty self-explanatory that, like many boroughs and many municipalities, we are, you know, some serious deferred maintenance issues that are going on with our water system, just like many of the municipalities in this area. Water plant camera update, we voted back, we voted on that a couple months ago. That work should start sometime in August and hopefully be done by the end of the summer. So all of those camera updates will be updated and installed. The emergency management coordinator update, all of our paperwork has been sent back to the county. The county has actually got all the paperwork, did all, everything they need to do to approve it. And we are good to go with our newly appointed emergency management coordinator. So he is up and running as we speak. Reports and the updates, all of those links are posted online. The sheriff's cell list is also listed there, the most current list for the month of May. Kind of a month behind, so. Moving down to the business, postponed business, there's a couple that are on here. Postpone the facade improvement grant because we need to do, just cross some, cross some Ts and dot some more Is to make sure that we are fully ready to go on that. We've talked about the motion to postpone the food truck ordinance and also the authorization of the Borough Manager to authorize the park pavilion. So we'll go through these one by one. Can I have a motion to postpone the facade improvement grant?
So moved.
Second.
Ray on the first, Carrie on the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously, six, zero. Can I have a motion to postpone the food truck ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Ryan and Carrie, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously, six, zero. Can I have a motion to postpone the authorization of the Borough Manager, the ability to authorize park pavilion reservations for up to 30 people?
So moved.
Can I ask why?
I think we just would, he just wants to get a little more clarification on whether it's, is it electric, no electric, street closure, no, just exactly what is he allowed? If it's just 30 people, is it, you know, 29 people, but they want to close this, this, and this? Or, you know, what, what are some stipulations of, of why he would just, wants to wait until July to kind of make sure everyone's on the same page with that?
Second.
I missed the first, Ray, was that you?
Yes.
Brian, was that you down there?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously, six, zero. Under new business, can I have a motion to pay the borough bills for the month of May 2023?
Second.
Carrie on the first, Lou Manhoma on the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously, six, zero. Can I have a motion to authorize a donation of $1,500 to Summit Hoes for the annual 4th of July fireworks event? Julianne and Brian, all in favor?
Aye.
I will abstain.
Passes unanimously, five, zero with one abstain from Carrie. Can I have a motion to approve? Hold on before, because there's any questions. Are there any questions about the motion to approve the change order on the CDBG year 47 sanitary sewer lining project? There is a note there, and this is an additional cost. So the, the one pipe actually has no liner left in it. So it's an additional cost to us, different from the initial, the initial evaluation of it. It's going to be an additional $23,500, which is going to be paid from our sewer fund, which we currently have about $572,000 in there. So any questions on that motion? Can I have a motion to approve the change order on the CDBG year 47 sanitary sewer lining project?
Amen.
Second.
Carrie on the first, Ray on the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously, six, zero. Can I have a motion to approve the award for the 2023 Borough Paving Project to El Grande Industries? He was the lowest bidder for a grand total of $422,957.50.
So moved.
Carrie.
Carrie on the first, Brian on the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously, six, zero. Can I have a motion to authorize Gibson and Thomas Engineering to start to submit bids for 215 Corbett Gazebo Project? There's a note there that the estimated costs, just roundabout figures, are 25 to $35,000 for a 24 by 24 foot raised gazebo. This motion just authorizes us to kind of put some things out to bid. So can I have a motion to authorize Gibson and Thomas Engineering to bid 215 Corbett Gazebo Project?
So moved. Second.
Ray on the first, Kevin on the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously, six, zero. Can I have a motion to, actually before I read the motion, Anthony, if you want to talk about, there's three properties here to bid demolition of the following properties, the 110 West 11th Avenue, 338 West 10th, and 1219 Pit Karen.
Sure, all three of these houses are in severe disrepair. Have holes in the roofs, mold, raccoons. They're, they're definitely a nuisance for their neighborhoods. And they're, it'll be, it'll be good when they're gone. All the asbestos testing has been done, so the contractor that, that does bid it, they will have to bid based on the asbestos abatement. Two of them have enough asbestos that it requires a permit from the county. One of them doesn't.
And these three were already in our demo budget for 2023, so. Can I have a motion to authorize Gibson and Thomas Engineering to bid demolition of the following properties, 110 West 11th Avenue, 338 West 10th, and 1219 Pit Karen?
So moved.
Second.
Carrie on the first, Lou Manhoma on the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously, six, zero. These next three properties, 708 Pearl, 917 Porter, and 714 Western. We're going to go through the COG and, and the county, the use of county funds through the Act 115 demo program. So Anthony, I don't know if you have any comment on those three properties?
They, they actually are in similar conditions as the previous three. Actually, two of them were pretty recently occupied. So I had to, I had to wait till the Ocmins were out to pursue the condemnation on them. They were in pretty bad shape. Two of them are on the east side, one on the west side. So hopefully we can get, get the grant funding to do those. I'd like to have them done by the end of this year, but there's no promises. I'm still waiting for the county on the one duplex that we have on East A. Where we have that, we're waiting for that grant money.
Anthony, I have a question.
Yes.
The one on Pearl Street?
Yes.
And we've discussed that one. Going through the county, through the COG, whatever, is it better than us because of the position of the house and, you know, a guard rail or something would have to be put up there?
You mean if, if we specify that for the, the demo contractor?
Yes. Yes.
I, I think Gibson Thomas will probably be involved in preparing the bids for the COG grant as well. So we can, we could ask them to put that in, in, as, as one of the specifications for the demo contractor to prepare that, to, to be able to receive, you know, a, a guard rail.
There's something because.
It is, it's, it's on a, it's on a corner and a hill. And it would, it would definitely be a good idea to have, have a barrier of, of some sort, even maybe in the meantime, the, the contractor could drop some, some Jersey barriers there until we come up with something.
They're not going to be able to make the bend then.
Yeah, it's, it, you know, once the ground settles, and it'll take a couple of years for it to happen. We may have to put something there temporarily. But yes, I'm, I'm glad you brought that up because that has to be addressed, buddy.
Oh, yes. Thank you.
Sure.
Can I have a motion to authorize an application for Act 152 demolition grant via the AVN COG in Allegheny County for the following properties, 708 Pearl Street, 917 Porter Street, 714 Western Street?
So moved.
Second.
Carrie on the first, Ray on the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously, six, zero. And I have a motion to approve Trenton Borough Recreation Board recommendation for a funding and a mural on 312 Corbett Street.
Should I abstain from that also? The recreation board?
Okay, yes.
Okay.
Just Lou Manhoma on the first, I need a second. Kevin on the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain.
What I'm saying. Passes unanimously, five, year with five, zero, excuse me, one abstain, Carrie Fox. Can I have a motion to authorize tree trimming along Sixth and Corbett by Sharina Brothers LLC at $2,000 per day, not to exceed two days, that would not to exceed $4,000? Just as a sense of reference, we did get another bid. The other bid was for $6,400, so this is by far the cheapest bid.
So moved.
Second.
Carrie on the first, Ray on the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously, six, zero. Can I have a motion to authorize the fountain repair at a cost of $12,000 by the Sharina Brothers? Again, we had one bid that was $29,900. We had another bid that was a little less than the $12,000, but it didn't include the iron fencing that goes around the entire fountain. So this was again the cheapest bid.
So moved.
Manhoma on the first.
Second.
Is that Brian? Brian on the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously, six, zero. Can I have a, a motion to authorize our struggle to replace the flooring in the borough building on the administrative side after the water lake had approximately $7,500? We did have one other estimate that came in at a total of $13,500. So again, this is by far the cheapest bid.
Have we heard from the insurance yet?
I, we have heard from the insurance. I believe they're going to cover all of this except our deductible.
That's good.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Carrie on the first, raise the voices louder. All in favor. Opposed. Passes unanimously six zero. Uh, before we do, before I read the motion, Anthony, this is about a consolidation of lots one-two-two-four-J, two-eight-nine, and one-two-two-four-J, two-nine-zero.
Yes, this is the, the two lots on First Avenue, um, near, uh, Clark's Candies there. There's a, an existing house on the one, the other one is an empty lot. The owner of both lots wants to consolidate them into one big lot and, uh, build a larger house on, on the, the new parcel.
New construction.
Yes.
Any questions? Could I have a motion to approve Trenton Borough's Planning Council's recommended consolidation of lots one-two-two-four-j dash two-eight-nine and one-two-two-four-j dash two-nine-zero?
So moved. Second.
Ray on the first, Carrie on the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes unanimously six zero. Uh, there is, we did talk about the civil service amendment. Um, so we're looking at section four point two, which only applies to sergeants and above. Uh, the entry level officers still have to complete a physical fitness test, they have the physical and psychological evaluation regardless of the promotion or the rank. And then the other thing is section five and section six are both being recreated since, uh, they are missing. So that's what that, uh, motion is about. Any questions before I ask for a motion? Can I have a motion to approve Trenton Borough Civil Service Rules Amendment per recommendation from the Civil Service Commission?
Summon.
Second.
Carrie on the first, Ray on the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes unanimously six zero. Uh, can I have a motion to approve the Pavilion Reservation for Bezinski's memorial service on six seventeen twenty twenty-three, uh, from four P M. to seven P M.? Uh, the note there is they do not need any electrical service.
Second.
Carrie on the first, Brian on the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes unanimously six zero. Could I have a motion to approve the country expressions ban to utilize the amphitheater, um, on Sunday, June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three for a free concert slash social event open to the public?
So moved. Second.
Ray on the first, Brian on the second. I'm sorry, Kevin on the second. I thought I'd be okay with.
What up, Brian?
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes unanimously six zero. And that is it with new business. Moving on to, uh, committee reports, AVN cog, Ms. Fox.
Uh, joint paving equipment, um, our shared joint paving equipment is up and running. Um, so if Trum's interested in anything, we need to get our name on the list. Uh, the B R P twenty twenty-three apps for the demos are due by the sixteenth, as Anthony was mentioning those properties. Um, there's also seventeen vacant property applications into the county. Um, COVID did prolong a lot of these. Um, with new management at the county, hopefully these can be moved forward. Um, thank you to Rob, Dwight, and Anthony for moving on these. The sooner these are settled, the better for all of us.
That's seventeen from Trenton?
Yes.
Awesome. Anything else?
That is all for cog.
Mr. Kerr, Business Advisory Committee.
Uh, we had our May Business Advisory luncheon on the twenty-fourth in the park, which was very nice. That was a beautiful day. It was hosted by Jim Tellerico, the, uh, Trip Total Media. And both him and Keith Bertello talked about what's going on with the Trip Total Media. And there's, they're doing a lot. They have a lot of irons in the fire. They, they do printing, uh, not just newspaper and advertising. And also Siobhan Timko is in charge of the Highland Senior Center located down in Dalton's Edge. And she was talking about their open house and everything, and they have a lot going on for anybody that's old. No. Talking about myself. Our next luncheon is going to be the twenty-eighth, and the host and the locale will be determined later. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Finance Administration, Mr. Bertaki.
Uh, nothing at this time, everything can be found online.
Thank you. Ms. Fox, Parks, Rec, and Library.
Uh, Recreation Board, um, hosted two concerts so far in the park. Um, they were both very successful. Uh, May twenty-fifth was Lost Boys, and in conjunction to that, we had a food drive honoring Justin McIntyre and Jordan Schreckengoss. Um, it was very successful, and AVAC was the recipient of the, um, non-perishable items. Um, they were very grateful for all of their donations. Um, thank you to everyone that donated, um, AVAC appreciates it very much. And a special thanks to Marka Music and Eureka for supporting this event. Next concert is June twenty-ninth featuring Murphy's Music Band, and July sixth is American Pie. And then the works is the Boo Festival and the Christmas parade. That's all I have. All ready.
All right. Well, we don't have Christmas.
Not ready yet.
All righty.
Sorry, you gotta plan ahead.
You're at least waiting until the Fourth of July, fellas. Hey.
What was the June twenty-ninth concert?
Uh, June twenty-ninth is Murphy's Music Band. As soon as the parade ends, we start.
I believe it, I believe it. Uh, Mr. Nolan, Property Health and Zoning.
Nothing new.
Ms. Homer, Public Safety.
Nothing, it's just time.
Public Works.
Monthly report is online.
Thank you.
Also, if you see the guys out working, give them a little extra room when you go past them. You know, just they're doing the best they can and just make sure they always have a little extra room when you're driving past.
Safety first.
Safety first.
Yeah, let's not try not to run anybody.
Uh, Carrie, back to you, redevelopment and revitalization.
Um, the redefined on Fourth and Corbett, I'm sure a lot of you already know, but they moved to Brack Orange in the old bistro building up there on, uh, Freeport Road. Uh, Garrett's, um, H V A C, which has been in business for a long time here in Trenton, is also going out of business, um, due to lack of help. They just, they just can't, they just can't find any help to keep their business alive. Um, also, um, I'm sure everybody knows about Savvy Citizen, the Savvy Citizen app. Um, if you don't, I have flyers up here, but please spread the word, and that'll give you all your recent updates, um, in the borough and beyond. That's all I have.
Excellent. Uh, Mr. Snyder is not here for a report on special events or tourism. Utilities, Mr. Kerr.
Uh, as far as the electric goes, they're, they've been very active on Corbett Street, getting that ready for the new stoplight. Corbett Street project work. Also did some tree trimming. And they've been working on the, the sensors, the push buttons that you push to cross the streets, like at Ross and Seventh. There's been trouble with that. A lot of pole replacements going on. So that's about it for the electric. As for the water, water use, use each comparison. For the month of May, the Trenton Water Plant processed twenty-two million eight hundred thousand gallons of water. Most of you, most households have a garden hose. If you have a five-eighths garden hose, fifty feet long, and the average pressure is anywhere between forty pound and sixty pound, so we'll say fifty pound per square inch, your water flow rate would be twenty-eight point one gallon per minute coming out of that hose, which equals one thousand six hundred and eighty-six gallon an hour, which equals forty thousand four hundred and forty-six gallon a day. You can leave your hose running, if you want to, for five hundred and thirty-six days, if you want to get twenty-two million eight hundred thousand gallon of water out of it. So over a year, that's what we produce in one month.
So turn your hoses off, right?
Big, big bill.
And chill that handle, and that's why.
And that's not even cotton sewage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's all I have, sir.
Great, Clarkson.
Thank you, sir.
That's good.
Uh, that brings us to the, uh, second and final citizens comment, uh, section of the evening. Again, this is open to anything that we have discussed tonight on the agenda, or anything else that is on your mind. Uh, if you do have a comment, I ask that you please rise if you can, state your name and address for public record. Um, reminder, it's a three-minute time limit, and it is an opportunity for you to make a comment, not, um, to engage in a debate back and forth. So I will start with this side of the room and move this way. Any comments, sir? State your name and address.
Raymond Fortuna, Bull Creek Road, Trenton. I just want to pack out a little bit here. Couple pictures. People, key people to look at. This is for your chief. Make sure he gets it, because I got a letter with his name on it. And you got a letter that Dwight mentioned me on, so definitely you get a copy of this. And I was going to give it to Dwight, but you can have it. Now, what you're looking at there is the fountain, I just heard tonight, it looks like there is something going to be done with that fountain. Because the way it is currently, if you look at the picture, you got an open electric box. That wire is coming in and out of there that are core out, are live wires. I checked them myself, I know a little bit about electricity, not a pro, but I know a little bit. They're live wires. The other picture is the gate around it. That gate's been open. And this situation has existed for at least a month, probably longer. So you got a safety, I hear you talk about safety and liability. You got a hell of a liability problem there, and a hell of a safety problem. It can't wait till this company comes and fixes the gate and fixes the electricity. Something's got to be done with it today, right now, the second. Now, the power needs to be shut off to that fountain until it's repaired. In fact, and I would like to request council president, if he could, uh, lend the services of Anthony Bruno, the code enforcement, to check out the entire park. Because again, I am not an electrician. However, I do know something about electricity. And there are numerous, numerous violations in the park of the borough's electrical lines. And I think they all need to be addressed because it's only a matter of time till someone puts their hands on that fence down there and gets zapped. Because the lines that are there, that are not in compliance, or like you said, go up through trees. And that's not legal. So that wire could rub, that electricity could travel down a tree, right into them posts which are grounded into the ground, and you could electrocute somebody. So somebody to think about, maybe I ought to just shut the power off to all the park? And I'm just going to throw this dig in here for the heck of it, like you did with the boat docks. The situations are exactly the same, the punishment should be the same. I'm done. Two minutes and forty-five seconds.
Forty seconds is there. Thank you, sir, for your comment, appreciate it. Going down the line, ma'am?
Hi, guys.
You don't need this, ma'am, you're good.
My name is Ayola Simon, one oh nine Corbett Street. And what I would like to know is, are the garbage trucks going up the alley to pick up these cans? Are they going to pick them up all on the street?
So the plan, all I can tell you is the plan is, it's, it is, they are going to do the best, that, this is their, this is their answer. They are going to do the best, to the best of their ability, they are going to pick up the cans in the exact same places that they are right now. So if you are in an alley and you put your garbage in the alley, their number one goal is to pick it up in the alley. If you're putting it on the street right now, that, their number one goal is to pick it up in the current location. That, they, we brought up that exact same point to them, that, you know, if, if we have to make a change, um, we're all going to kind of learn that together at the same time. But their initial, their initial goal is to, to pick it up where it is currently.
Yeah, I mean, because a lot of streets, they have people parking on the street. So how are they going to get in between these?
I, I agree with you a hundred percent. I, I agree, I have the same concerns where I park.
When they picked mine up today, and it was the first time, they brought the can to the truck.
That's their plan, that they can't get it to it.
It's, it's, you know what I mean? It's on them, they have to figure it out.
Right.
That's why we pay them. So hopefully, cross your fingers.
And then another one, and I want to, I've been getting all these letters from the light, um, in the West End. And I'm like, and you know, why aren't they sending me a light to reduce my light meal? When I'm not with West End?
I get the same letters.
Just ignore them.
Just toss them. You telling me I'm Trenton Electric? Then quit sending them.
Well, maybe I should write that on the paper and send it back.
Send it back.
That would work.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome, thank you for your comment. Moving down the line, any comment?
Robert Hertz, uh, five oh one First Avenue, Trenton. Because I, I have a boat dock down in Trenton, dock sixteen. I had surgery, I had my son's wedding coming up, I misread the contract, I thought it said May twenty-fifth. I'm, I brought it down May twenty-second, but obviously it was May fifteenth, and I didn't know that. Because my vision isn't as good as I used to, and I kind of sped right through it, you know, Evelyn Williams speed. And, um, I just made a simple human mistake. I paid for the dock, but I accidentally didn't read the contract right. And I'd hate to lose something that I put seven years of blood, sweat, and tears in because of what's up here. I had a lot going on, and I just did not realize when it was due. I thought I was actually early, but apparently I was over that. All I'm asking all of you is could I please keep my dock?
I appreciate your comment. You could see that it wasn't on the agenda this evening. Uh, and, and honestly, that would be something that, uh, I believe our borough manager will be back in the office tomorrow. I would suggest that you circle back with him, um, but I appreciate.
I mean, if I was late on my gas bill, they wouldn't come shut my gas off. I, I made a simple human mistake, like probably none of you did. But it wa, I misread it. And that's all, I, I hate to lose my dock after seven years, blood, sweat, and tears, because of a simple mistake. I had surgery, I had my son's bachelor party, which I did not attend, and I had my son's wedding, which I was able to attend. I just had a lot going through my head, and I just made a simple human mistake. I misread the contract.
Thank you, I appreciate your comment.
I have three comments, Cynthia Kramer, five forty-one East Nine. Couple things, all the waste management cards make no sense in our environment. I have no idea how this is going to ever fly. Um, I suspect we're going to have an awful lot of garbage sitting in a lot of places, and damaged vehicles or other things that are just, it's an impractical system. We're not a bunch of driveways with, uh, you know, where we can park our car at the end of the driveway and avoid everything else. That's not going to happen in most places in the borough. Um, so we'll see how that plays out. Second thing, access to the police over here, I find, uh, I found a problem. I found somebody's debit card in the park, because I walk there all the time. I found somebody's debit card, tried to find out who it was, didn't see anybody, didn't want to be, didn't literally want to touch it at first, um, because I didn't want to look like I took it. Didn't wanna be, didn't literally wanna touch it at first, um, cause I didn't wanna look like I took it. Tried to drop it off, and there was no way to get anybody to respond. I tried phoning, I tried using the call button. It took half an hour before I, and I was just ready to take it with me, which really made me uncomfortable, before finally somebody came to the door. And there was no alternative about, you know, it says use the phone, which is just empty wires.
Right.
Um, so there was, I, I felt really strapped trying to do the right thing and get somebody's debit card. It was on a Friday, I'm like, they're gonna be, it was the long weekend.
Mm-hmm.
Like, this person's gonna be looking for this thing, and there's no way for me to just get it to someplace reliable.
Uh, Cynthia, when that occurs and you come there, just call the non-emergency number to County Dispatch. They will dispatch a police officer to come right down.
At County Dispatch, cause I tried all of the Torrenham numbers and just got put in the voicemail.
You call the non-emergency number for the county.
That's the 412 number then, right?
And now, if you need that, I have that, I will give it to you at the end of the.
Well, I have the old magnet on the fridge if it's still the same number, but I just.
It's posted on a sign out there.
I mean, when, when you throw it down to the county, and they go, uh, where? You know, I thought, I was, it's, it's not very, it's not very user friendly.
Just tell them that you need to speak to a police officer and get dispatched.
Again, it's not an emergency to me, it was an emergency to the person who's gonna be without their debit card for the whole Memorial Weekend. Um, and I tried even, you know, getting 411, or getting the phone number, there was nobody listed in Torrenham with that name. It was really very frustrating. Third thing, and I'm sorry, I'm probably coming close. I was appointed by the council to the Environmental Advisory Council Commission. I have not had any, anything to do, it seems to me we're cutting trees, and we're putting up gazebo's, and we're doing all these things that would be something that we could help give some feedback on, and nothing seems to have happened. Um, so I'm suggesting that maybe we stir that pot somehow.
Can you, before you leave, can you give me your contact information?
Absolutely.
And I'll make sure that.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate your comment. Last but not least, going down the line.
Well, I, I don't live in Torrenham, but I work for your state senator who represents Trum. Her name is uh, State Senator Lindsay Williams, and she could not be here tonight, but I'm here to report back on all the wonderful things you guys are doing. And, and what citizens are, what's bothering them, what's important to them. Um, anyway, this month is, is uh, budget month in Harrisburg. That's why Lindsay is not here tonight, but it's um, kept her very busy. And, um, but after the budget is concluded, which should end at the end of this month, we will be having a um, event. Senator Williams likes to hold these demystifying Harrisburg events. So you can tune into that, and this one will be on the budget, what the budget process is, you know, how decisions are made about how your money, your tax dollars are spent. You know, um, groups that can have influence and those that don't, et cetera, et cetera. It's a very good thing, um, her uh, legislative director will be on that call as well. It's a Zoom virtual call. Anyway, if you want information about it, you can check out our newsletter, I do write the newsletter for Senator.
What is the date of that event?
Um, we have, don't have a date yet, because the budget would be tricky, we don't know when it will actually end. Sometimes things get contentious, and we don't know when it'll conclude.
We think in Ju, July, August, somewhere.
Yeah, yeah, early July.
Is the newsletter, I'm sorry, is the newsletter on her page?
You can sign up for the newsletter on there, there, we also have um, uh, old newsletters on there. But you can sign up to get the newsletter on her, on her website.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And the event should be advertised there as well, there's a tab for events, okay? Uh, we don't have it up there yet, because we have, until the budget ends. Um, the last thing is, we know you guys, Dwight has been wonderful communicating with our office about the um, water and sewage problems with Torrenham. And because of that, and Senator Williams wanted me to communicate this to you, because of that, she's, and other municipalities, but Dwight in particular, um, she's asking for a $300 million increase in the small water and sewer grants, because all of the municipalities in our district who are all struggling with this, but particularly Torrenham. So she wanted me to make sure to tell you that, um, and to thank Dwight for keeping us informed of your needs.
Can we just ask you your name for a minute, please?
Sure, I'm sorry, I'm Marilyn. And my last name's terrible, Oberst Horner, hyphenated. O-B-E-R-S-T hyphen Horner, I have a card if you'd like it.
I got it all, that's pretty good.
Anyway, thanks for um, letting me listen in.
Thank you, you're welcome anytime, and I will make sure I pass along your thanks to.
Yeah, thanks um, Lindsay also for advocating for Trenton Borough. Does water and sewer grants really help?
Absolutely, they're so popular, there's never enough funding.
Yep.
Any other comment from anybody up here on the board, or on council, excuse me, before I ask for a, a motion to adjourn at 6:54 PM? Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting, I'm sorry, now it is now 6:55?
Semin.
Carrie on the first, second. Kevin on the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Right, opposed? Meeting is adjourned at 6:55.